Good evening, everyone. I'm Mayor Lawrence Riel and I'm calling the Tuesday, February 18th, 2025 regular meeting to order. The time is approximately 6:00. This meeting is streamed on the Village website. The public can also participate via Zoom. Instructions and overall public participation guidelines or guidance is listed on the website and on page four of the meeting packet. Danielle, would you please give additional information on that issue?
Thank you, Mayor. The Village of Los Ranchos is providing the ability for the public to participate in hybrid meetings as with any application digital service or software can fail. Therefore, the Village is not responsible for the inability to connect to the meeting either by Zoom meeting link or viewing via live stream. The meeting video and audio are recorded and will be available online after the meeting on the Village website.
Danielle, would you please call the role?
Thank you, Mayor. Trustee Benavides.
Here.
Trustee Kiefer.
Present.
Trustee Ranovich.
Here.
Trustee right now.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, everyone, for being here. And now we will move to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve or amend the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
It's been moved. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
It's moved in second. Any discussion by the board?
None.
All right, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, well, we'll now go to general public comment. Only those participants who signed up prior to the meeting can speak on topics that do not appear on the agenda under the public comment and will be given three minutes. To be fair to others waiting to speak, a timekeeper will make an announcement when the allotted time is up. Therefore, is it important? It's important for sure to keep your comments short and plan on making as many of your points as quickly as possible. No other action can occur on these items. If you have questions, please feel free to contact staff during the business hours here at the Village. Danielle, would you please proceed by calling up the individuals that have signed up for the general public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and trustees, our first individual is Ms. Camille Vados. I don't see her present. Mr. Jeff Phillips. If you would, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Jeff Phillips, 605 Schulte Road Northwest. Mayor, trustees, just have a couple of quick things tonight. First of all, I want to give a hearty thank you to trustee right now for presiding over the Village for the last 10 months. It's greatly appreciated. Your service is greatly appreciated. Next, welcome aboard Mayor Riel. I look forward to working with you on a host of community initiatives over the coming months and years. And if you'll have me, I'll continue as the Village Emergency Management Coordinator. I serve at the pleasure of the mayor. And I'll talk, look forward to talking to you a little bit about that in the future. And then finally, I'll just give an update on the community walks. Since the January BOT, we've had two walks. Our 10th walk was on January 25th. There were 17 people and four dogs. We explored Vineyard Road, the Alameda Drain Trail, and returned via Edgewood and the Chamisal Lateral. And then our 11th walk was this past Saturday. There were 15 people and two dogs. We braved the sketchy weather to explore the Allison Lateral and the Pueblo Asequia. And these walks have been wonderful community activities. To date, somewhere around 60 people have participated in one or more walks since middle of September. I do encourage anyone who's interested to join us for the next walk, which is Saturday, March 1st at 1:30 PM. It'll be an interpretive farm wandering. We're going to meet at El Verado Elementary and head south to the AgriNature Center and then return via the Los Poblanos Fields Trails through the Rio Grande Farm. It's going to be about two and a half miles in total. We're hoping for good weather again. And if anybody has any questions or needs additional details, walklosranchos@gmail.com. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Daryl Mummert, if you would, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Mayor, trustees, Daryl Mummert, 330 Vineyard Road. I just, I wanted to come up and I want to thank trustee Kiefer and Public Safety Officer Fred Radzovic. They've been doing some traffic studies on Vineyard. They had a long meeting with me a few weeks ago, like an hour, two hours. I mean, they, it's been a great way to start the year. I mean, they really show some concern. And I think you guys have been, he shared the traffic studies with you. It's like crazy numbers on Vineyard. And they're really working on some resolution. And I just want to say in my 22 years here, other than working with Kelly Ward when he was administrator, this has been like exceptional, the work that they're doing. And you feel like it's a good way to start the year off. So I want to thank them for all their efforts and I, hopefully, we can come to some good solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call for Ms. Camille Vados one last time. She's not present. So with that, Mayor and trustees, that concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move to item number six, approval of the minutes. Approval of the minutes from January 21st, 2025 regular meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
It's been moved to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved in second. Any changes to the minutes? Any issues at all? No? Okay, that, then we'll call the question. All those in favor of the minutes signify by saying yes.
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 All opposed, same sign? Or no, I should say? All right, we'll move now to item number seven, presentations. We have a presentation this evening on fire preparedness initiatives from our Public Safety Liaison, Mr. Fred Radzovic. And I know that trustee Benavides, you've been really interested in this issue in particular. So hopefully, we'll be able to answer some of those questions and move forward. Fred?
Thank you, Mayor and board of trustees. I just handed you out a packet of some information. I apologize for being so late, but we've had some meetings just in the last week. And that's, I wanted to make sure we included some of the stuff that we did in those meetings. But just so you know, on the wildland fire preparation, we contract out to Burnell County for the fire protection. The Village, the Los Ranchos Fire District is located at Fort and Schulte. Fire station there, they have numerous pieces of apparatus and full-time staff there, okay? But as part of the battalion north, which is all of the North Valley, they have Station 31, 35, 36, 39, and of course, 30. So there's plenty of apparatus in the North Valley to respond to any type of fire or emergency that comes up. Along with that, during most of the season, there's another truck, a pumper truck stored here at Village Hall that is fully operational. There's no staff, but it's fully operational, that they would be able to staff and very quickly to get more apparatus out. They also have mutual aid agreements with the City of Albuquerque, with the City of Rio Rancho, Sandia Pueblo, Corales. All the surrounding fire departments all have automatic, what they call automatic mutual aid. So if they have an issue that comes up, they automatically start coming at a moment's notice. We also have State Forestry, which is in the Bosque, that will also respond. And they have full-time firefighters available in case something happens. The Bosque, which we're more concerned about than anything when it comes down to it, is also known as a Rio Grande Valley State Park. It is actually a state park and it goes basically from the Sandia Reservation to the north to the Isleta Reservation in the south. That is all managed by the City of Albuquerque's Open Space under a contract with the state. It's about 4,300 acres. There's some natural fire breaks. If you walk that area, whatever, you've got the Paseo del Bosque Trail, then you've got the Artrisco Feeder, you have the Albuquerque Main, the Gregos Lateral. And that is pretty much free and clear of any vegetation whatsoever. And that rains, that runs almost all the way down from Alameda to Montano where there's that, I call it kind of a natural fire break. We also have the Burnell County Office of Emergency Management just outside the Village on Second Street at the atrium. That is staffed and ready to go. We have our own emergency manager, Jeff Phillips, who probably has more experience in emergency management than most of the people in the state. And he's a great asset to the Village. So in the last couple of years, there's only been one fire in the Bosque, we call it the Northern End of Bosque. That was off of Montano and it only burned about 30 acres. I say only, that's a lot, but they were able to respond to that extremely quickly and get it under control. So in preparation for some of the things we were talking about, Jeff and I attended a meeting with City Albuquerque Open Space on January 30th where they're piloting some very new technology where they put sensors out, and they're going to put some sensors out in the Bosque if they can get all this put together, that is kind of an early fire warning system that will sense fire in the flames and within three minutes, it'll notify the fire department that there's a small fire. I kind of made a commitment for the Village that we would love to participate in that project if they get it up and running. And they agreed. So it's called smart technology. It's called Torch. And I was pretty impressed with what we've seen. They've still got some new stuff they got to come up with, but at least it's a good start on some of the technology. We also had a February 13th meeting with the Burnell County Fire Department, the Chief Officer for Emergency Management, their wildlife people. And a couple of things we've asked them to do is they're going to do some drone footage from basically Alameda to Montano of the Bosque to kind of get an idea of what kind of fuel there is and everything so we have a better idea of any hotspots, or so to speak. They're going to have a community town hall, actually as part of the North Valley Fire Season, which they're going to coordinate with all the partners and everything. They're trying to set the date, they probably be in early March at Taft Middle School. And they will have not only all the fire departments, all the emergency management, all the players, State Forestry, and all the people there and have a town hall and answer questions and provide information to everybody. They're also going to host a Strategies and Tactics Meeting with Burnell County Fire, the Wildland Coordinator. And we just got information today that that has been scheduled for February 27th, which Jeff and I will be attending. And it gives us an idea of what tactics they plan on using for any type of wildfires within the Bosque. Something that the Village did last fall under Mr. Avala is they did a lot of green waste pickup where we allowed residents and businesses and stuff to drop off green waste. Took a lot of that down, trees and limbs and stuff. And we're hoping that we can continue that throughout the spring and to get as much of that stuff off the ground as possible. Dissemination information, we're, the Village is working on several aspects. Locally with the Village, we have text my gov to the Village Los Ranchos. Fill out a thing on your phone. It's called 91896 to V O L R. And the Village will be sending out text messages on any type of thing. We send in road closures on all these different things. Burnell County has what we call reverse 911 where you can sign up, where go online, fill it out. It used to be Nexel, but now it's through Everbridge. And they will automatically enter your name in the computer. And if they have any type of emergency in your area, they will send out that 911 call to you. The other thing is they have what they call an Integrated Public Alert Warning System, IPAS, that they can put to cell towers. And if there's something in this area, any cell phone that is in the area at that moment will get the notification. So I think that's, and you don't have to sign up for that. You don't have to do anything. That's an automatic thing that they can send out. Plus the Village website, Facebook, social media. Jeff is a social media king for the Village. He puts stuff out all the time. And that's a good way to get information out because a lot of people don't watch TV or don't watch the news anymore. On the prevention side, I handed out some ideas. We need to encourage residents to have a defensible space around their property. There's a handout there. Hopefully, we can get that information out in the Village Vision or on the website also. And then a Ready, Set, Go handout. And the most important thing during any type of emergency is life is more important than any property. And we tell people, if you've got to get out, get out. In this Ready, Set, Go, there's a lot of things on the websites and stuff that you can be prepared for that, on what you need to have. Have a go-ready bag, this type of stuff with some of the things. But it's just getting that information out to the public. And as we approach wildlife, wildland fires, which is typically between April and June because that's the windy season, but I will tell you that that's kind of gone all the way to February to like July now. So, but I just want to, and Jeff, you may have some other comments, but I think we're preparing the best we can. And I know the question has come up, you know, with the fires in Southern California. That was what we call a perfect storm. There's not a system in place that would have prevented any of that from happening. When you have 100 mile an hour winds blowing and every vegetation and everything so close together, there's not a water system in the world that would be able to pump that much water. But we can still be prepared and make sure that our residents are aware of things and hopefully prevent as much as we can, but be prepared to respond. So Jeff, you?
Thanks. At this point, I'll just add the, especially with respect to the Ready, Set, Go, that's connected directly to the Weather Service and the red flag warning that most people have heard of. So anytime there's a red flag warning, that kicks the ready part together. And then the set is if the, if we get an initial start, if we get a new start, then we'll know wind speed, direction, likelihood of travel, direction of travel, and whether or not the Village in particular is threatened. And then we'll be in a set mode. And then go would be evacuation is recommended. And that will be all supported through our entire emergency management structure with respect to fire and law enforcement and social service agencies and animal agencies and you name it. And that other document that we handed out is our Stand Up Incident Action Plan that lays out as many of the assumptions that we can possibly lay out so that if we get the word of a red flag warning, we can kick in some initial actions. And then if we have an actual start which has a threat to the Village, then these contingency actions get kicked in. And this is the Strategies and Tactics Meeting we're having next Thursday. We'll go over these assumptions. And then the Wildland Coordinator and Director of Operations for BCFD will either validate or challenge our assumptions and will improve, continue and improve that. The last time we used this was last, last year Memorial Weekend. There was very substantial critical fire weather with winds and dry humidities and also with the Memorial Weekend. So we kicked this in and we were in set mode and thankfully, we didn't have to activate. But it's a pretty standard process that we've been doing for years. And each year, we get a chance to improve it a little bit more. And that's what I've got.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Are there any questions from any of the trustees? Okay, trustee Kiefer?
I have one question. And I don't know if this applies or not, but I know, and it wasn't just, I was personally affected last year. I know trustee right now had this happen to him too. But I'm just wondering what happened because sometimes we get the winds that are crazy and we have a lot of electrical lines that run through our trees. And last year specifically at my house, it was creating an arc which was sparking everywhere. And anytime you called P and M, they didn't care. They said, call the fire department. The fire department would show up and they said, well, there's nothing we can do because this is a P and M issue. And I understand, but what is a homeowner supposed to do in a situation like that? Because had an ember just caught a leaf that was maybe even in the neighbor's yard, dry, there you go. Now you're starting a possibility. So, you know, it's not a wildfire per se. It's a residential fire that on these big treetops that we have could easily spread to affect multiple properties.
So Mayor Trustee, a couple of things. One, with P and M, they have a plan in place to start shutting down power if they start experiencing any problems so that they can shut down lines to the Village or wherever it may be. And there's a plan, then they notify the Burnell County Fire Department and all their Office of Emergency Management so we can start being prepared. The thing is, is a lot of times their P and M crews, unfortunately, they go through a dispatch center or whatever and, but I encourage people, if you have any arcing, you have any, call 911, let the fire department respond to make sure that there's no fire. And then we can work through that with P and M afterwards.
Okay. Thank you. And the only reason I ask is, you know, the fire department was very much help, they were very helpful, but they said there's nothing we can do until there is a fire. And the winds acted up all night. So my husband and I took shifts on staying up all night to make sure that there wasn't a fire. And it still took three months for P and M to come and trim the tree. So, I mean, there has to be some type of sense of urgency in situations like this, I would assume.
Mayor and trustee, I think one of the things that we need to do in the Village and is, you know, we need to go through where these power lines are at and notify P and M ahead of time is to get that on the list so they can start trimming those trees and not waiting for a fire. You know, when we had that big snowfall back in November where they had all those lines, they actually did some right after that proactive trimming. But I think we need to spot those and I think Village staff, through some other things, we can start spotting those and put that notice on the P and Ms. to get it on the list. With the amount of fires they've had, not only statewide, but countrywide, electric companies are a little bit hesitant not to come and trim things when they've been notified because of the liability. And so, like I said, I think we can, we can help with that and spot some of that early on.
And maybe that's something we add to the Village Vision to have residents contact the Village if they have that issue.
Mayor Trustee, let me just add real quick on that. The program Fred mentioned is new and part of it is a nationwide strategy to shut down power when certain criteria are met. And so red flag is part of it, winds is part of it, and notifications. So I would also encourage, in addition to calling 911 and the fire department, call me and Fred because we have a direct line into the P and M Operations Center and we can maybe make a different case, not a better case, but a different case. And that's part of their decision-making process of using this new, and it was just in the news because the news release just went out. So you'll see it in today's news, Public Safety Power Shut Off is a new program. And frankly, it is the utility companies being defensive and being averse to liability because they have inadvertently started lots of fires over the last years, including Hawaii and California. So it's kind of, you know, how often and when and under what circumstances and the Energy, Minerals and Natural Resources Department of the state is directly involved as well as all of the affected jurisdictions. So we're actually going to have a tabletop on this in April and we'll have more information. The more you let us know, the better.
All right. Thank you very much, trustee Benavides.
So I like the, the fire sensors. That's a smart idea for the Bosque. I'm just curious how that technology works. Is it optical and how many acres does it cover?
The briefing that we said it could cover up to 10 acres at a time, depending on where it's placed. In my vision, we would place it up higher so that we get more coverage in the Bosque. And that's what Albuquerque Fire and Open Space is doing right now. They're looking at an area, they're targeting around Central Boulevard and some things where there's a lot more brush and a lot more thickness there. And they're going to look at, see how they can do that. But it can be put up on the poles, it can be put up just on the ground. But I think Jeff and I talked about, I think if we could put it up higher, it gives us more coverage. The sensors are not that expensive. It's the subscription afterwards that costs a little bit. But the testing that they've done, and they actually sent some out to the fires in California after it started. This is a brand new technology and Albuquerque Open Space is their test ground.
So it sounds like you need line of sight to these sensors.
Pretty much. I think you do. Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, the sooner you know there's a fire, the more, the greater possibility that you're going to be able to contain it.
And what it does, it senses gas, smoke, there's a whole multitude of things that it senses. And the demonstration was pretty phenomenal.
All right. Thank you, trustee Ranovich. I was just going to mention Mayor and Fred and Jeff. I'm aware of the tree program that P and M has, and they have an aesthetic program as well, but not all of their crews are trained that way. So considering how important trees are to Los Ranchos especially, when they get asked to come out here and kind of spot these areas where trees might be an issue, I think we ought to talk to them about having their aesthetic arborists come out because we don't want any Bart Simpson hairdos on our trees anymore.
Mayor and trustee, I totally agree with you, but I will tell you that my family owns some property in the Hamas where some of those fires have been. And we got a hold of the electric co-op there and said, hey, they just got these trees in a power line. We came back two weeks later and there was zero trees. So, but again, they're, they're doing it for liability purposes. They're not doing it for aesthetics. And so like when they were doing the stuff in November, anything that was in the power lines or close to the power lines, they were, they were cutting out.
They're doing it for both, though.
Right. But I'm just saying, yeah. But their first priority is just to get the stuff out of the power lines.
No doubt.
But yeah, I think we can work with them on that.
All right. Thank you, trustee Ranovich. Let me ask just one question, Jeff, and maybe Fred, you all can follow up with. I think another component might be is getting the fire department as they're working on a daily basis, you know, going to the Village, looking at those situations. I mean, who better than the fire folks might be more knowledgeable about how close power lines need to be, are to trees, et cetera, as part of, especially these, these few months leading up to us, Fred, as you said earlier, with the windy season almost upon us, although today was a little breezy. But it's, I think it's really important because I think trustee Kiefer's point is well-taken. Folks are seeing these arcing situations. A lot of folks don't, don't understand, like myself and others, you know, what to do with a situation like that. And they get themselves in a, in a world of hurt if they're not careful. So it might be a good thing to have the fire folks look at that as well. And then the last point I would make is this system that the city has, the City of Albuquerque has through their Emergency Preparedness Program is really a good system for, for all of us in this region. They have the ability to be able to ping cell phones within a certain radius of where a situation occurred. So that if you, like several years ago, we had the Bosque Fire, that technology was employed to notify residents within a certain radius of that fire to take shelter and to do whatever needed to happen. In some cases, you don't have to let the whole county know. In some cases, you have to let, know the folks that are more impacted and then gradually create, disseminate the information. Because a lot of times what happens when you have these issues, because all of us can see the smoke, folks start making decisions that, that create, quite frankly, issues for folks who are actually impacted by getting in the streets or what have you. for folks who are actually impacted by getting in the streets or what have you and before you know it, folks that really need to move out of the situation can't get out because everyone else is, is thinking this thing's going to get bigger and bigger. And so this technology really is helpful. A balloon fiesta as well, whenever you have situations there, they use that same technology. So I think it really is worth even at some point even just having more conversations and providing some information to the general public about that. So, thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. Appreciate it very much. All right. Well, now we'll move to, uh, new business. Um, item number eight. Item number eight is Resolution 2025 dash 02 dash 01. A resolution revising the policy and procedures for conducting commercial film, digital video, and still photography in the village of Los Rancho's. I will turn it over to our administrator, Mr. Avila, uh, to, uh, have a, present the, the, the resolution for us.
Mayor, Board of Trustees, um, this is, um, attempt, uh, after, uh, months of, um, reviewing the process and having to go through the situation each time to, excuse me, simplify it, we think, for the, um, applicant and allow us to have a full review, um, so that, um, you know, we're able to check the impact of a permit in a location. Um, and then just to, uh, uh, go ahead and, um, with this resolution, uh, establish, um, excuse me, the, uh, the changes here, uh, as far as what they need to do as far as, um, information to us, uh, primarily. Um, and that's, and that's the essence of it is to, um, get that information, allow us to get it out to the community and, uh, review their application for permit.
Okay. Do we, um, have anyone signed up to speak on this resolution?
Mayor and trustees, there are no individuals, um, that signed up for this item of business.
All right. Forgive me, I keep forgetting to turn my mic on. So, um, what's, uh, my, my veterans here, uh, thanks for this, for the help here. All right. Well, then, um, having, uh, there is no one signed up. Danielle, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Well, then let's just, uh, then go to the trustees for some comments on, on this resolution. Do we have a motion for approval of the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025 0201.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All right. Any, um, any discussion on the item?
Uh, yes.
Trustee Benavides.
Uh, so I'm going to be in favor of this, but I, I want to bring up a couple of points that you, if you agree, you might think about making some changes. Uh, so on page 26, uh, in the application, okay? Uh, it says, "By signing below, I hereby acknowledge that I have read and understood the Los Rancho's film guidelines." Okay? So I, I would make two comments about that. Um, one is, you're not saying, "I have read and understood, uh, uh, the policy and procedures." Uh, you're, it sounds like you're agreeing to guidelines, not procedures that, that, and guidelines typically are not considered to be requirements. Uh, so think, you might give that some thought. And, and if you think you got it covered adequately, fine. Um, page, let's see, page 29. Uh, yeah, so I think, I think we've seen this before, actually, this, uh, the fees for this. And I think I had a comment before, I thought the fees were too low. And I know you, the fees have looked like they've been doubled or at least doubled, but it still seems like the fees are too low. Um, but, uh, uh, you know, I'm not going to belabor that point. Uh, page 32.
Uh, trustee Benavides, on that point, trustee.
I, I agree. I think the fees are too low.
Okay, good.
Uh, I really do. I mean, with all the traffic and all the, the personnel who are involved in the village, I, I think that we should really consider raising those fees and be more consistent with what's going on around us.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
I'm glad you agree.
Back to you, trustee.
Uh, page 38. Let's see. So, yeah, so this is the start of the policy and procedures. Um, just, just a curious, uh, remark about that. Is there a reason why we don't codify, uh, the, the policy and procedures in our ordinances? Um, and maybe that happens at some point after we feel like we were comfortable with it. Is that, is that the idea?
Uh, Mr. Avila.
Board of Trustees, Mr. Mayor, um, so, uh, this is what's in practice and in procedure at this point, and that's all we're changing. One of those things we should look at is all ordinances, and this may be one of them, um, as far as we're making changes.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Okay. Any other, uh, trustee Benavides?
Thanks, mayor. Um, I just had a few things. I think this is really well-written and, and good job on, on this, John. Um, I just had a couple of things. One is, I thought I saw, um, a notation in the guidelines, but not in the, in the directives, the, the permit, that the neighbors should be notified, and I may have missed it. Uh, but I think the neighbors ought to be notified. It's happened to me before in my neighborhood and, um, I think it, it can be a real, um, issue for, for neighbors. I believe you noted that on number seven in the, in the guidelines, uh, that trustee Benavides just talked about, but I didn't see it, um, in the permit itself. So just a thought there. Another thing I thought about this was that the village ought to get credit, and I didn't see that in, in a film or a, or a television show that, um, uh, might get filmed here. I think, I think we ought to be listed, uh, as, uh, as a place, uh, just like other, uh, places do. So that, I think, could be added to the policy and procedures. Um, I, I too think the fees are way too low. Uh, film companies do pretty well, and I think they can afford more. Um, let's see. Excuse me, I, I need to change. I put my comment in front of the, uh, in front of the line. Uh, so, sorry, just one second.
Trustee Benavides, while you're looking for that?
Yeah.
Can we maybe go back? I think, uh, trustee Benavides?
Oh. Oh, uh, I, I didn't have anything more.
Okay. Apologize.
Okay. I'll skip that one. I can send it to you later, John. Yeah, I, I, I put what about the neighbor, on denial, under K? And I'm not suggesting that the neighbors have full say, uh, but they ought to be at least notified and asked their opinions. Um, but on page 42, um, you, you have a list of, of the denials, of the, the way that denials should be handled. And I, I thought maybe we should add a, a bullet there about the neighbors too. It's just above revocation. Uh, on the, on the guideline, it's page, uh, 42. Yeah, same as, same as in my PDF. Um, on page 43, I, I just didn't understand one of the statements, John. Seventy-five percent, and it's, it's, um, under letters of notification on page 43. Uh, it's the second paragraph. And it says seventy-five percent of the affected neighborhood in the minimum boundary. I thought we might want to note what the minimum boundary is, uh, so it doesn't, they don't have to go to the code to find, find that out. Um, just trying to make it simple for them and us. Um, and that was it. I think it's a really good, really good job. Thanks, mayor.
Thank you, trustee. Um, let me make, uh, one comment. So the last, oh, I'm going to say thirty days or so, the, uh, film, the cleaning lady has been, uh, filming right across the street from my house.
Oh.
And, um, it's been, um, as supportive as I am of the film industry, I am very supportive. I think it's great for New Mexico and I, and I'm glad we're, we're, that the village is being utilized and, uh, for these kinds of opportunities for New Mexicans. But, um, the interesting issue really, quite, that, that, that sort of this whole filming raised is the impact that the actual filming, uh, if you will, uh, when they actually do the filming in the residence, what the impact is to the surrounding residents. Now, interestingly enough, in this particular film, they did a lot of the, um, scenes were outside, in the backyard or in the front yard. And it's usually at night. And you can only imagine when you have stadium lights, uh, lighting up the, the area and, um, and what impact that does to the surrounding neighbors, if you will, uh, where it's been filmed. And, and it really just raised an issue for me and it's not, we, we don't need to cover it today or in this resolution. It may be at a future conversation, but when a resident, a resident is used like this, uh, they're obviously being compensated for using the resident.
Yes.
What's not always taken into consideration is the, the impact to the neighbors that are right directly next to the home. Um, I'm of the opinion that, for example, you know, blocking a, a public roadway because they had to block the roadway to film for every three minutes or so, they blocked it for every, to me, that is, um, that is sort of a part of the ability for them to do the filming, and I, I have no issue with that. It's, it's more the six hours of filming from eleven, from ten o'clock to one o'clock in the morning and the lighting, the, you know, and it impacts the neighbors. So John, in the future, as we looked at this, uh, obviously, these policies are living documents and we'll continue to amend them as we, uh, look at these issues. It might be important for us to think about, um, that issue as it relates to maybe even, as far as maybe even looking at compensating the, the residents next to the film because, look, this house is, oh, this is the second time they've been there for a period of a week. And, and, you know, I think it's great again, but, uh, if this, if this continues to this, and it's a series, it's my understanding, it'll be, it'll, they continue to be utilized. And so, um, all that being said, I think it's something that we might, we might think about as it relates to being, um, to having folks who are at least in their homes be good neighbors as well and, um, and looking at the impact on their, on their neighbors, um, on either side of their home. So with that being said, otherwise, I think that the, overall, the, the, uh, the updates are, are, are fine. I too have, and I expressed this to John before we, uh, put the agenda together, that I thought that the rates were too low. So anyway, that's, that's my perspective as well. Trustee?
Yeah, I just have a couple of, a couple of points and, you know, certainly, um, I definitely agree about neighbor notification. Uh, I think that's, that's going to be extremely important and the, and, and the breadth of that notification, I think, needs to be defined. I also had comments about the, about night, night production. Um, we've had, well, uh, I, I live on Ortega Road and just north of Ortega Road, we, we had a company there for, uh, for about two weeks, you know, and it was hard to get onto Rio Grande at the time with, with all the traffic going on. The, um, permit fees, I, I certainly agree with that as well. Um, what I would, the question I had though is, is there is a provision here, the application approval takes five to 10 days? John, is, is that really realistic given the, the scope of the application that has to be reviewed?
Um, trustee right now, um, board trustees, what page is that?
Um, yeah, I, I saw it earlier. Um, I didn't, let's see, I didn't note the page. It's.
I believe it's, I believe it's not in the guidelines. It, it's in the, uh.
It's in the application.
It's a permit. It's, uh.
Yeah, the permit.
Hold on. I actually noted that.
So when you say, is it realistic? Here's the reality. Um, the film company has these scouts or these agents that put this out. Give it to them maybe a couple, you know, couple of days in advance, or if, if they're lucky, they, they'd give a very short timeframe. But, uh, those folks are trying to, uh, be in touch with us, you know, within the 10-day period because we do want to have public safety review that and, um, also there's other departments, public works and so forth. So we want as much time at, uh, with it as possible. Um, so in, in an effort to get them to be more efficient with this, this is one of the reasons we've made some adjustments on here. Um, and I would like to say very, you know, again, my thanks to, uh, public safety liaison, Fred Rudasovich. Um, he's put a lot of work into this. Now, but, you know, when we, we went back and forth on fees, if there's a, an alternate fee schedule recommended in the resolution, we can, uh, go ahead and include that. Um, yeah, that's one of the items. And then it's not here, but in the notice, uh, to neighbors, we have an affidavit sheet. Well, that's not anything much more than just signing a piece of paper, but at least they have somebody notarizing that and making it, uh, you know, making that document. And, and it's a 300-foot radius is the designated area. However, if, again, the board wants to make that larger, they can as well. If it's 500 feet, um, that might be, uh, that might be something we need to, to include here.
I did see, um, a, a, a number of places where you talked about, um, parking requirements and traffic control, and certainly I would definitely agree with that. And Fred, thank you very much for including that. Um, I'm just wondering then, um, at what point then do we have to contact DCSO so that they're aware of the, the kind of traffic that is going to be present in the village?
Mayor and trustees, uh, that, the original resolution and policy guidelines only required three to five days for us to process it. We found out during this last couple of times, it takes a little bit longer than that. So what we do now is, uh, again, as, as the administrator says, it's 300 feet of, of notifying the neighbors. Uh, but in that policy, it also allows a village administrator to expand that if he feels necessary to do that. Uh, notifying the sheriff's office, uh, when we put this in place, uh, if there's any intermittent traffic control, anything like that, they have to get an agreement with the sheriff's office to provide deputies to do traffic control. Uh, that was the original one. The sheriff's office doesn't do that anymore. So we use either state police or, in some cases, we can use the Albuquerque Police Department, but they have to send us their communication with either state police or whatever agency we, we allow. Once we review that, then once the permit is, is going to be issued, then I notify both, uh, the sheriff's office and the Burnell County Fire Department that they're going to be filming those locations during that time.
Thank you, Fred. Thank you very much. I don't have any, any further comment.
All right. Thank you, uh, trustee, um, trustee Benavides.
Uh, it, it's, it seems to me that we should make an amendment, um, uh, on the fees. And, I mean, I don't want to do an amendment and then somebody else do another amendment. But I, so maybe we could discuss it first, uh, how about if we multiply the fees by a factor of five? Does that sound about right to you? What do you, what do you guys think?
For, for me, it's hard to say. I'm, I'm not involved in that industry. I'd, I'd probably like to know what other places in New Mexico charge first, but, uh, I mean, that may be a starting point. I, I, I don't feel qualified to answer that.
Well, I mean, we, we, we have a motion in front of us, right? So we either, um, we, we either vote to approve or deny or defer.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah.
Um, trustee Benavides, may I make a suggestion? Maybe what we should do is, is, um, double what was proposed as a starting point and then, um, ask John and the staff to come back and, and do the analysis. I happen to know that these are a lot lower than most everyone around us.
Oh.
And so I think that we're in pretty safe ground to say at least doubling them. And then, John, if you all could come back and look at the fees, um, you know, and see how far off we are from the, from what our neighboring communities are. We certainly don't want to have people past Los Rancho's to go somewhere else to do the filming necessarily, but with the same token, we want to make sure we're, we've got the right number. Mayor, should we triple them?
I think it's.
If you know what the fees are.
Trustee, I don't know all the details of the fees for sure, but I think that we're in safe ground to at least double what's been proposed. And that would be my, my perspective.
Okay, no, I think I'll take their recommendation. And if we're so far out of line still, even after doubling it, you can come back, right? And we can, we can do this again. So, that, that'll be part of the amendment. Does anybody else have anything they wanna add to that?
I, I, I feel it's really important to have Los Rancho's given credit on any movies that are shot here.
As location credit.
Yes. It's just like.
I agree.
When we had the effort to get people to use Los Rancho's in their addresses and, and not the city of Albuquerque.
May I suggest, then, on the amendment, if I might, the, giving the credit to Los Rancho's can be put in the application as part of the application process. So, I suspect that, John, we can direct the staff just to include that. So, we might only need to put that in the amendment.
Okay.
Because that one's already, it can be included as part of the application process. But, so we have an amendment at the forward.
Yes, let me, the.
I made the original motion. So, Mayor, I consider that a friendly.
Thank you.
All right. So, the amendment would be to double the fees, which are shown on, on page forty and, but it's probably shown elsewhere as well, I think, those fees. I think it's shown twice, right?
So, we have a motion, an amendment, a motion to approve the amendment. Do we have a second to the amendment?
Second.
It's been seconded. Any other conversation on the fee adjustment? John, any concerns on your end?
I do not. It's, you know, we're, we're, we're making this tighter, we're, we're making changes that are gonna make it more efficient for us and, and put the work back on the film companies to get this done rather than our staff.
Okay, all those in favor of the amendment as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sign. That passes. Now, we go back to the original motion.
Mayor, my apologies for the interruption for a resolution. We do need to do a roll call vote on this one.
I was about to. On the, on the amendment as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
We'll go back then to a roll call vote and Danielle, would you please read the roll call on the amendment?
Mayor and Trustees, we had an initial, the original motion to approve by trustee Kiefer, a second by trustee Ryanau. We have an amendment approved by trustee Kiefer. Trustee Benavides, the amendment to double the fees, seconded by trustee Ryanau. So, now we're ready for the roll call vote. Trustee Benavides.
Yes.
Trustee Kiefer.
Yes.
Trustee Ranovic.
Yes.
Trustee Ryanau.
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you. Trustee Kiefer to close?
Oh, did you say no?
We just voted on the amendment. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Right, so now we're back on the motion to approve.
Oh, that's right, okay.
Oh, motion, motion.
I guess so.
Friendly amendment.
Okay, any other comments on the resolution? All right, all those in favor of the resolution twenty twenty-five dash two, dash zero-two, dash zero-one, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, good work, John and staff. That motion passes. So, we are now going to a resolution zero twenty-five, zero-two, zero-two, a resolution designated signatures for excluding financial transactions with financial institutions conducting business with the village of Los Rancho's de Albuquerque. We have our CFO, Tammy Silva, I believe. Is that correct, Danielle?
Mayor and trustee, she'll be coming on Zoom, and there she is.
Very good. Good evening, Tammy.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, trustees. Before you is resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh-two, dash oh-two. What this resolution is doing is, it is to rescind twenty twenty-four dash oh-nine, dash oh-two and bring current the signers for the checks and the signers for the investment and bank accounts. And so, the first part of this is to name the mayor, administrator, clerk and treasurer as the four signers that can sign on the checks for the account for the village of Los Rancho's. And the second part of this resolution is to name the mayor, administrator, clerk and treasurer as the four people who can execute orders to invest or redeem investments with the New Mexico State Treasurer, LGIP, account and all village bank and investment accounts.
Thank you, Tammy. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I make a motion to approve?
Then, uh.
I'll second that.
Second, move to second. Any discussion by the trustees?
I have none.
All right. Seeing no discussion, all those, oh, we gotta go to a roll call vote? Danielle?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. Trustee Benavides?
Yes.
Trustee Kiefer?
Yes.
Trustee Ranovic?
Yes.
Trustee Ryanau?
Yes.
Motion passes, vote passes four zero.
Thank you very much. That takes care of our, our approval process for this evening. We're moved now to the administrator's report and we'll turn it over to, to John to give us an update.
We have the cash report first. I don't know if Tammy or anybody else wants to share with that, but you can ask questions. So, year-to-date, and this is expenses versus revenues in the House year-to-date. They're exceeded, which is expenditures over revenues at eight oh seven, five, five sixty-nine. I point that out. We do have a two hundred, a thousand-dollar payment to the IGA that's planned. And then, the payment to the New Mexico Finance Authority of a hundred and four thousand for geo-bond interest payments, another, you know, big payment, but again, versus what we receive in revenues. So, those are the, those are the highlights there. So, we've already predicted in our budgeting that the IGA with the fire department, the bond interest payments and then other expenses, professional and so forth, were, you know, be our major expenses in the year. And as we catch up with revenue, hopefully, we'll be on a more in-the-black as far as monthly meeting expenses versus revenue.
Okay, do we have, is Tammy still on the line, John?
I believe she is.
Tammy, would you like to add any more to that presentation?
Mayor and trustees, I, I do not have anything to add at this point. However, again, if you have any questions, I am here for questions.
Okay. Any questions from the trustees on the financial report?
None.
Okay.
I just, go ahead. Note one, I wanna note one thing. So, in the cash balance summary by fund, the general fund, you know, typically, we have, you know, ending cash balance and then we have an encumbered amount that's very near the, the cash balance. So, this, this month, we see a discretionary amount of four-point-three million, when in the past, I think the most I've ever seen that is maybe a couple hundred thousand. So, congratulations, you've only been on the job for two weeks. Now, we're, now we're four-point-three million in the black.
I'll take all the credit in the world for that. Thank you very much. Tammy, any thoughts on that point?
Yes, Mayor and trustees, trustee Benavides. So, this is something that did come up a couple of meetings ago and trustee Benavides, you are the one who brought up that, that question. And so, I went ahead and I took a look at the cash report and what I noted was that the way we were showing the discretionary cash prior to this month was we were only looking at what was happening during this fiscal year. So, that's why the balance was so low. And you did have a comment, trustee Benavides, asking, you know, if that was an accurate number. So, what I did was I went back and looked at it and decided that to show the true discretionary cash amount, this is taking into consideration the full cash balance of our general fund instead of just revenue that's coming in during this year. So, that is why there is such a big difference now. And I think this kinda gives you a better picture as to the reserves that are there for us in the general fund that are not being used right now during this fiscal year. And I hope that helps clarify that.
Thank you.
It does. Thank you very much. So, this really represents more of a cumulative totality of the revenues that are available at this point.
Yes, Mayor, that is correct.
Thank you very much for that clarification. All right, moving on then to item B, departmental updates.
Mr. Mayor, Board of Trustees, so just call out some highlights. We have done work on the Dale Nordy open space buildings and, you know, they're showing up actually in some of your cash reports there. And that has to do with making them, you know, usable and so that they don't deteriorate any further. So, that's the first part on that. In the first, actually, a month ago, we met with Secretary Serna, this is on the Sound Barrier, to ask that NMDOT look at that study, taking into consideration the methodology that we pointed out. Also, with that conversation, we asked that they look at the interchange at Pasel del Norte and Second Street. It's been problematic and it is, does affect our village. And then, also, as for additional funding and, and safety for signalization and signage for specifically traffic crossings and school zones. So, those were some of the requests in our, our meetings with the secretary. And then, what, what we, what we're looking at here is, in the future, to address some of what's been brought up, ordinance changes, resolutions, and some of the highlights, including the VC zone, which is the Village Center Zone, our signs, bed and breakfast establishments, special use permits, and then general editing to ensure consistency and accuracy throughout the village code. Then, possible resolutions, facility rentals, we didn't bring that to this meeting, so we're, we're looking a little further in that. Organize, organizing records, we take a resolution and then all selling our surplus items, which is something that we would do on a, on a semi-regular basis, we'll also need resolution. So, these are some of the, the items that need to be done, the activities and work we need to be done here in the future. So, I point that out as far as ordinances. We are hoping to have all the material in place so that we can have a, and we recommend a special meeting for Palandrom for the Board of Trustees to hear that next site development and plat. That's, and we're hoping that's gonna be in March. And then, as to the, the green waste pot project, here is, you know, here's some of the reporting of what that project produced. It really was a, a popular project with the community. There was possibly, you know, averaging at least a dozen people each week dropping off of material. And the amount of, of tonnage of green waste is, and this is equal to a cubic yard, is seven-hundred-and-sixty, actually, thousand cubic yards. You know, cubic yards, because that's a, it's equal to a ton, were collected. So, that, that equates over, over the period of reducing the methane that greenhouse gases that would be produced by burying or landfilling the green waste. So, again, popular, it, it is something that we'd like to focus on as far as reducing greenhouse gases. There is a cost of approximately about six-hundred dollars in transportation fees. That's not in our budget through the rest of the fiscal year, but if we'd like to continue that program, we need to either, you know, budget for that or come up with some other way, perhaps composting, complete composting on-site rather than transport. So, that, that will be a discussion for the next budget period. The, the, the extension or the reauthorization for two-hundred thousand on Fourth Street was submitted, also other ICIP requests, and we should have more information on that as of next week. I don't wanna get into the details there at this point. And then, as far as APS, we've asked for records and, and hopefully get information back from them. At this point, we haven't had that communication, so that we haven't, we haven't had those records as, as of this, as of this date. So, we'll follow up with them to see, you know, if we can still get those produced. As far as Old Village Hall, the design and survey of that project was given, you know, community response and the designers found that it's just problematic to design what was being asked for in that area. They were happy to design that in a different location. So, what we're looking at is improvements to that actual site at this point, parking, a wall, some more amenities and, you know, in the, probably a little over a hundred-and-fifty-thousand might take here of that improvement enough where the community and that neighborhood get benefit from that site. We have the New Mexico Municipal League, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth. That's the league day in Santa Fe, and so, we're, we're planning to be there. The tentative special meeting is, is hopefully for the site development plan review in March. That's what that date or placeholder is for. Yeah, planning zoning, here's, you have some cases here as far as the permits that went out. And then, as far as the results of planning zoning, the variance for, let me see the address. Well, it's, Maya Mullen is the applicant. That was rejected, but the applicant, Andrew McGibben, and the applicant Southwest Architects for the school, those were approved. And so, we do have a charter school planning to be at the Old Christian School on, on El Pueblo and right next to Second Street, so that, that particular area. All right. Public Works, again, great work on the green waste that, they, they took care of that on a, on a weekly basis and, and I do point that out. And they were happy with the work. The community was happy with the work, so again, encourage doing that again in the next fiscal year. And we have our public safety reports, the, the open space torch detection technology. I think one of the, the budget items was to plan for about ten thousand dollars. I may be off by a little, but I think that's the, the, the proxy amount for funding that in the next budget year. Again, tracking traffic, Chavez Road has slightly higher on the eighty-five percentile, but it's, as you can see, that's, it's, it shows as one of the higher speeds on, on the roads that were tracked. So, although it's not more than, say, ten miles an hour over the speed limit, it, it is still moving traffic and it's doing it at a higher rate of speed, so that's, it's noticeable. All right. I'm going to ask Dan for questions, I don't want to go read through the whole thing.
Trustees, let me just indicate, I know this is a bit of a change from what you all had seen before as it relates to reports. My, the purpose in terms of changing this particular aspect of the, of the agenda is really to, two things, one is to ensure that we highlight the more pointed things that we need to get done. For example, as John described, the, all of the, if you will, updates that we need to make to some of our zoning codes and some of the discussions that you all have had for some time, and my direction to them would be is to let's, let's present to the trustees what's on the agenda coming forward, and that we're working through them and eventually get to you all a timeline that now, if you will, deals with these issues one at a time, and if we can do more, that's great too. But the idea here is just simply to provide that update. I think it's much, a little healthier for all of us as a community to ensure that we have that public discussion here, but also that the PNZ has their work and that they have an agenda moving forward, if you will, of course. So I would suggest to the trustees that if you do have others, other issues with our zoning code, et cetera, that we need to update, et cetera, please let John or myself know or through Danielle, whatever the case might be, but let's just sort of make sure we get to some of these so that we can get them off our, off our plate, if you will, moving forward. And then the other piece of it is just, I know that many times we have all the departments that are in the Village here to make their own presentations, et cetera, but in many cases, I think a lot of this information is pretty straightforward. We can all digest it, and we would just open it up, you know, at some point here, just to have John just give out the highlights of what's going on over the, over the last 30 days, and then open it up for discussion if anyone has any concerns or questions. And if, or if you would like to have a more thorough briefing, you know, just indicating to John, please have so-and-so come visit with me, I want to get a little more information on these matters. Okay? All right, John, is there anything else you'd like to add to that?
No, not this time.
Any questions from the trustees?
Mayor, are you saying that all of our communications or our questions about this, we should do, not in private, but in an email or phone call or something like that, or?
Trusty Radovich, I think, I, there's no reason why we can't ask some of them here. But if we're getting into the details of some of these issues, it might be more beneficial for us to have that conversation with the staff and get some of those issues resolved so that when we have a better use of our time at the DIAIS to talk the policy issue versus the details of, for example, how many cars were going over 40 miles an hour on such a street. So this is, the idea is just to try and expedite our meetings a bit and get to that.
So can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Mayor. I was a little bit concerned when I saw that there was going to be a charter school on El Pueblo at Second Street. And I know that may get into detail, I, just based on what you just said, but it's the entrance to our village, it's, it's at a really problematic intersection, and it was approved. So I have questions about that because of the traffic it might generate, especially in that location. It's the old Yanomotos, I believe.
That's correct.
So, so I don't know how else to bring that up as a concern other than here.
Right. Mr., or John, maybe you can describe a little bit of where we are with that issue and give an update. And this, this is the right for, for that kind of a conversation.
Oh, good.
I just want to make sure that we don't get sort of caught into the details of some other issues that, that we can have a more, so John, if you could maybe talk a little more about that.
Yes. Trusty Radovich, Board Trustees, the zoning allows for the school, there was a school there previous, we wanted to make sure that planning and zoning had a chance to ask questions about it. One of the items that came out was that a traffic study will be done for the school, and then from that, you know, if there's traffic safety or otherwise that needs to be considered, that'll be, that'll be part of the process. They, I'm just running through some particulars. The school is having a ingress and egress driveway so that it's a circular flow around the building and then moves out to the street. Landscaping was asked for such that it helps that traffic and, you know, tries to protect the school area from the street as well. Those were some of the items. And again, we're, they are tasked with getting a, a traffic study, so that will add more to the, to what they'll be doing at that building.
It, that entrance is, the reason I'm concerned about what I said is that entrance on the east side of the old Yanomotos there, that would be a school, is so close to Second Street. And I, how many students are, did they talk about how many students they might be at a maximum having?
Projected number was 250 to 300, I believe.
I, I, I would be concerned about the number of cars, depending on what kind of charter school it is, coming by that site because that entrance is so close to that intersection, I bet it's 100, 100 feet from the right-of-way. So that, that's my biggest concern about that school because people back up, especially during rush hour when school would be starting, people would be backing up in that, in that intersection, and it would, it could be very difficult to get through. I often have issues like that on, for the charter school on Fourth and Ranchitos, and that one is about 300 students, 200 to 300, I believe, and it backs up sometimes multiple lights, I'll wait if I'm going through there, so during rush hour. So I see it as an issue.
Thank you so much. Any other questions, trustees?
Well, about the charter schools, okay. I have a concern, and I'm a little bit conflicted with this concern because I had a conversation with a man named, you might know, Diego Gallegos, right? And he used to, actually, I did some work for him, like 30 years ago, I was in a structural materials commission for him, doing science and math. But he's a proponent of charter schools now, okay? And, and so this is my concern about charter schools. We're facing, we have, we have public schools here already, and we see what's happening with TAF, and I'm very much concerned about the same sort of thing could happen to Los Ranchos Elementary. And I don't know what sort of grades this particular charter school will accommodate, but I, I worry, we already have one charter school here, and I worry about competing with students that might otherwise go to our, our public schools, and to the extent where suddenly they're closing them down because APS wants to do that, right? So that's, what, what grades, let's start with that, what, what are the grades there? Do you know? Did they tell you?
I was going to recall on my recollection, I believe that's the middle school grades there. Do you recall that from the planning zoning?
I think it was K38.
K38.
Well, I thought it was K38.
Okay.
So my recollection is going to be suspect on that.
Yeah. So, yep, that's a concern.
That is a concern. Where in the process are we with that, with that issue? The PNZ reviewed that, and that was an approval by the PNZ, is that correct?
It was an approval by the PNZ. They do have a requirement, again, for getting the, the traffic study, but the PNZ want to make sure that the entrance is on the west side, exit on the east side, so that there isn't that immediate blocking on the east side driveway. And that all, and there's, there's quite a bit of room for the cars to line up circular around the building. So I just recall the number, but it's, it's quite a bit that they're able to stack up as they go through and out on that site.
What I, what I was going to add is that we already have a problem at second, at the Second Street off-ramp, okay? You know, and, and so you have, you have barricades there that essentially are confusing to drivers. And we need to be able to ensure that that is going to be addressed with the school because, again, that's going to back up traffic in that area, and you've got people coming off of, of, of the, off of Paseo who are going to be potentially going to that school, okay? And at the same time, then they're turning into, to the school on, on the west side, but you're going to have a difficult time trying to control the traffic in that area. And, and that's something that we've brought up to Secretary Serna that needs to be addressed.
So any other comments?
Mayor, I had one, one more slight one. I use that intersection quite a bit, and another concern I have is that there, the westbound traffic on Paseo is not allowed to turn left onto El Pueblo at Second Street. They are forced to go around that corner and then, and then travel westbound on El Pueblo. Many, many of them use that, that site as a turnaround so that they can go, they can in effect go left or eastbound on El Pueblo so they can circumvent that no-left-turn requirement. So that's another conflict that's going to occur, potentially because of that school, because that, that happens a lot at that intersection. It doesn't sound like we can do much at this point, but these are some issues that, that I think the traffic study should address and recommend, I hope, fixes for these problems. So.
Thank you, trustee. I, I do have, share the same concern, I think, that's been expressed up here, John. Being that the PNZ actually has already approved this, is that correct? So their requirement to have a traffic study is, serves what purpose other than to educate themselves about what the traffic, because I think the issues that we're hearing here is that if the traffic study, you know, reveals or that there is an impact of some significance on both, on those intersections, which just from a common sense perspective, it probably will be, you know, what, what's, what's our course or what's our opportunity to potentially revisit this issue, at least to get a better understanding? And I'm talking about this body. Is there any opportunity for us to weigh in on this issue?
Well, I'll invite also a comment from Fred Rudosevich and Maria as well on this, but the traffic study should, one of the things to do is point out traffic safety on that street. So if we want to reduce the speed, maybe that helps. There might be some other, you know, speed up would be really long speed up, but there might be some other traffic calming devices that we, that we would be, you know, informed to put in. I do bring this up, the, it went before planning zoning, but it was allowed to be administratively signed off on and approved because there was a school there before. So it went through that just to make sure that there was that public input, and that, that's one of the things we want to make sure of, but that's what our ordinance is, is that, you know, it could have been administratively signed off on. So at least now we have now at least some public oversight of, of what's happening there.
All right. Any, any follow-up from anyone else on this issue?
I will say that the school that was there, John, I remember that, and it just, it never succeeded, which is why it's not there anymore. So there weren't many students, it just never really took off, so.
Well, with that being said, John, maybe, I guess, Fred or Maria, do you all have any comments on, on any of the traffic issues that have been raised here by the trustees?
Mayor, trustees, I would just add that we would actually ask Bernalillo County Traffic Engineer Support Division to look at it as well because it's in their jurisdiction on Second Street. We would coordinate with NMDOT, and it may actually give us a little bit of leverage on that issue with the off-ramp and the delineators that do a very poor job as you head south coming eastbound. So it's an opportunity to look at that entire intersection there, multi-jurisdictionally. So as soon as we have the traffic analysis, we will do that.
All right.
And shop it out and make sure everybody gets their eyes on it.
Okay.
Mayor and trustees, just want to echo what Maria's, the problem is that intersection belongs to the county, it's not in the, in the Village. So they're the ones that can only make any changes to that intersection per se, but hopefully we can work with them with this traffic study and then come back with some recommendations on how to, how to change anything that needs to be done.
I, I understand that, and I agree, Fred, Maria, but the, the exit out of that site is our jurisdiction, and it's right next to the intersection, so it is multi-jurisdictional.
Right. And so hopefully we can work with the county and see, maybe they can give us some recommendations at the same time to, and through the state to come up with some, some ideas.
Yeah, yeah. With that being said, as John pointed on his report, we did meet with the Secretary of DOT when we were up in Santa Fe. Frank was with us, and we, we talked about this in particular situation, including potentially a school being there on that site, because we knew the application was before PNZ. So I also followed up today with the district engineer, with Mr. Brasher, who indicated that they had the same concerns and were reviewing it as well. So I do think we've got everyone working on it. I think that the challenge is just simply is, is getting a, a sense of what this traffic study is going to reveal in terms of its impact to the actual site itself and, and how folks get in and out of that facility without impacting the intersection in such a way that it, that it creates even more complications, more than there already are. That is for sure. So it is on the radar for, so I would just, we'll let you all know that we'll continue to pursue this, and, and John, we might want to just think about how we manage through it with PNZ.
Mayor, may I just ask one? Just because I'm, John, you know, I'm very direct. If the traffic study comes back and it's just crazy, the impact that it's going to have, is there backing out of this?
I'm, no, I'm just, just saying, I would, I would suspect that we can, you know, bring forward, you know, conditions and concerns to the school. Like, for, for one, when talking about those cars that are going to move over from Paseo and try to make that pull to the right, to make that turn and so forth, they might, and we talked about this with, as staff, they might be advised to drive on past, give yourself enough time, make a circular traffic pattern to get in from the west side. So just the school working on making it safe is also going to be important.
I mean, I just think liability, right? Insurance comes to my mind, and I think liability, and if that's village easements and access points, if a child gets hit, you know, are, are we on the hook as well? So just something to think about if it does come back kind of crazy.
Right. I think it'll be important to see what that, what the results of the study are, for sure. Okay, any other issues, any other, on his report? All right, well, then we'll move on to our next order of business, and that's, you will see on page 74 just a, a basically appointments to, to committees or boards, if you will, that we are part of in terms, from a regional perspective. I had originally thought about how we might allocate each of these, if you will, boards, and, and I was just going to open it up for the trustees. This is one of those documents, it's a living document as well, if, if folks would like to be on different committees, I am more than happy to, to make those accommodations, but I just wanted to present what I thought would be, given the interest that I perceive everyone has here. And so, and Trusty Radovich, I know that the, the access committee may not be the most exciting, and I know that you had expressed some concerns about maybe not wanting to do that kind of work. I don't know if we had, I had asked Maria potentially to serve in that capacity, it's a much more of a technical committee, but you tell me and we'd be happy to accommodate you.
Mayor, I wasn't looking for an exciting post, but. Mayor, I wasn't looking for an exciting post, but... I, I have, I have pretty, well, considering what I just said about the school, maybe this committee is a good one for me. So, I was going to decline that committee appointment, but it makes some sense that way. I, I would, if other committee appointments come up, you know, my expertise is, is really not there. And so, I mean, I, I understand it because I work with engineers so much. But I'm, I'll, I'm, I'm good with it if, yeah.
Okay, well, then we'll leave, trustee Kiefer, are you fine with?
That sounds scary. But I will defer to your expertise.
Okay, great, great. Trustee Radnovich. You're fine? Okay. I will say one thing, and, and I had a conversation with trustee Benavides. And he raised a good point, and I think, Bill, I would ask you and John to look into this. And, and John and I briefly talked about it. We're gonna leave trustee Benavides serving as our representative on the Water Authority. One of the questions that, that he raised, and I think is important for us to review, is right now in the Water Authority, the city of Albuquerque has four members, Bernalillo County has three. Now, the Water Authority was established by state statute years ago. And that's how it gets its authority to do the work. And, and so, the, the challenge, however, was that the village of Los Rancho was, was given a position, but it's a non-voting position on that, on that board. And what we'd like to explore is the opportunities potentially of changing that status of that particular position to make it into a voting member position. Simply because in, the number of residents now in the village that actually are getting serviced by the Water Authority, et cetera, is significant enough that I, I think as a, as a member government, we should have an opportunity to weigh in on these votes, whether it's rate increases or what have you. And so, the question really, Bill, is straightforward. Can the Water Authority, on, on its own volition, through its own structure, change the status of our membership to a voting membership on their, on their own? Or does it require a change to the state statute, which is how the Water Authority was established? I don't expect an answer today because I'm sure it's, we have to go out and do some work on this. But we'd like to sort of move that up, if you will, in our, in our conversations here. And, and we'd also, obviously, if it requires a resolution, certainly, we would prefer to put a resolution forward notifying the Water Authority and the member governments that we'd like to have a full voting membership on that board. So, Gil or trustee Benavides will represent us, as he has been on this board. And, and we'll see how we can work through this issue.
Mayor, members of the trustees, I don't have an answer because I don't know the internal workings of the, the Water Authority. I can check that carefully and I'll report back to you and administrator as to what the process would be to get that changed from a non-voting to a voting membership.
And I would also add, if you would just keep trustee Benavides up to speed as well.
I will, I will keep him in the communications.
All right, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Mayor, I had one more question, if I could. I've been on board, voting boards with Water Utility in the past since they seceded from the city. And if there's a need for, if you're ever not able to attend, I don't know if we can have alternates for a board like that, but I'm very familiar with them. And I'd be happy to do that. Water Conservation's been a big part of my career since the beginning.
That's a great, that's a great suggestion. Danielle, if you could just put trustee Radnovich as our, as the alternate on that. One of the interesting things about that board, in particular, is in the current status of non-voting, I suspect we could have either one of you go because, you know, you're mostly listening to the conversation, unfortunately.
Right, right.
But once it...
Oh, once it becomes a board member, that can't happen.
Once it becomes a full board member, it might be, it might be a requirement under their bylaws that the actual board member has to be present.
Good point, Mayor.
But let's, let's, let's explore that. But in the interim, I think that's, that's actually a good idea.
Yeah, I agree. Good with that.
All right.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I? I just, I don't know if you're keeping record of this, but I just wanted to add the board of Main Street that I was appointed to. That way, it's just...
Let's, let's make sure we put that on the, on the, on the list of committees. Danielle, if you could include trustee Kiefer on, on the Main Street board as we, as a, as our representative.
Noted.
One of the other things I would just say in general, and we'll have more opportunity to discuss this, if you will, down the road, is we have a number of committees that we have in the, in the village that are doing work. And they are committees that are with great individuals and well-intended in terms of what they want to do. And I know that's as part of, for me, as part of good governance, is making sure you have a community members who are interested in serving and helping. However, we also have to have some structure in terms of some of those committees, in terms of their relationship to, to the village as a governing institution versus their interests as community members and/or interested in that particular subject matter. And so, as we move forward, we need to begin to have a conversation. I've talked to John and to Danielle about this, about structuring some of those committees a little bit. So that if we are, you know, basically having a committee to do some work on behalf of the village, that they be given that, if you will, for not, for lack of a better word, that blessing that they are. But also that they are meeting the requirements of the Open Meetings Act and, and taking notes, et cetera, and minutes. And ensuring that they're reporting back to the village. So, those are all opportunities for us to look at. And, and so, I will just leave it to you all to think about that. And, and let's have that discussion so that we can move some of these items. I know we've got some committees right now working on some really important things. And it would be really great if we got those committees, if we will sanction through the process of it. So, the other members of the community that aren't part of those committees have an access to the same committee and have same access to get some, their, their voice heard as well. So, with that said, these are the committees that are, at this point, that we have standing committees and will continue to work through this in the next couple of months.
Mayor, I have a question that's a little bit different.
Sure.
Just last month, we voted on the makeup of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I was one of the people that wanted to wait until today to have you review that list. I guess my question is, and maybe this is a question for, for Bill, not, not for you. Can that be revisited if the mayor had other people in mind for committees like that?
Mayor and trustee Radnovich, I don't see a provision in revisiting that for one year. The reason I took the position I did is because the Planning and Zoning Commission ordinances is one of the few places that there is not a provision that says they will continue until their successor is appointed, they're elected for one year. Most of the time, it says they're one year and they will remain in office until the successor is appointed. That's not in the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would think that the, the best way to, to do that, if it's gonna be done, is probably a conversation about, you know, different individuals and where they've been and all that kind of thing. But I don't see a provision to replace them unless, for instance, they miss two board meetings in a row and excused, and then they're off of the commission, things like that.
Bill, could they, could they, could we change that? So that they could, that it extends their potential position for more than a year? So, that kind of thing doesn't?
Well, they, they, they can serve consecutive terms, not to exceed five years.
Right.
Okay, the only question was if you're not elected on an annual basis, when your term expires, does it expire? Or does it extend until your replacement is put in position, like most of them do? And that was the conundrum I had last meeting, saying, well, there's not, not in the ordinance. And therefore, do we have a commission if we don't have them reappointed? So, I don't know how to address the second question as to whether or not there should be other people on that commission. But I will look at it. But there's nothing specifically about removing them except for non-attendants.
I didn't say anything about other people. I, I just meant, can, can it be more than yearly so that that kind of thing doesn't happen in the future?
We could certainly change the ordinance to say that they're appointed for one year and that, and, and like most cases, or until their replacement is appointed. We could do that pretty easily.
I, and trustee Radnovich, I, I have the same, we've had the same conversation, John and I did, just in general. But thanks for bringing it up. I, I do think we ought to look at that ordinance. I also think that the, 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 the timing of this is a little challenging, I think, for the village in that, in this case, where you had, forgive the, forget the issue of my coming to this position. But if you don't approve these individuals under the current statute in December, technically, one can make the argument that they have no authority in January, given the way the, the system is set up. And so, Danielle and I talked about potentially creating a process where in maybe November and December, November you select, December you're approved. So, January one, they're, they're, have been already, if you will, approved. So, we've gotta talk to Bill about how we structure that. But in all of that, I do agree that there's gotta be a way for, for the changes to occur that doesn't disrupt the work that they do. And quite frankly, it's not any reflection on any of them who are sitting in, in the chairs today, but also giving others in the community who might want to be, who might want to serve an opportunity.
Mayor, the way that was interpreted in the past is that the one-year term was from the date they were appointed in January until the next January meeting.
Right.
So, that's how it has been done. But I think that part, we can change anyway to make it work better for the village.
Great, thanks. Okay. All right, with that being said, then Will, I think we've, we're almost at our last part of it, which is number eleven, trustee reports. And so, I'll open it up to trustees to make comments on any issues that they've deemed appropriate for this evening. So, trustee Kiefer.
All right, well, I've just got a couple of things that I brought. One is I've been getting a lot of phone calls. And so, I think it's just a matter of pulling the Band-Aid off. And I know the answer, but I'm gonna make John tell me the answer. Are people living in the Palidrome project?
Trustee Kiefer, board trustees, I haven't seen him, but what information I have is that there are people there.
Thank you. And, you know, I, I know I've been sanctioned from voting. So, I'm not going to vote in the special meeting that's coming up in March. But I haven't been gagged to stay quiet. So, I'm not going to. And I don't think any of my colleagues would have expected me to. So, I pulled the development agreement. And I counted fourteen times that a certificate of occupancy is required by the village, not by Bernalillo County, before occupancy can, can take place. So, when it's mentioned fourteen times, I would think that's more of a significant requirement, not a suggestion, as Palidrome has obviously taken it as being a suggestion that they get approval from the village. But one of the things I wanted to bring up to my colleagues, in case you haven't seen it, for those that get to vote, is it is mentioned that before a certificate of occupancy is provided, that the village has the right to do a full audit. And in that audit, it can uncover a lot of information. Because some of that information is, they have to make available to the village examination of all developers' records to all matters covered by the agreement. It permits the village to audit, examine, make experts transcripts from such records, make audits of all contracts, invoices, materials, payrolls, records of personnel, conditions of employment, and all other data relating to matters covered by this agreement, both before and after closing. So, I strongly make a recommendation to, to exercise that right that's listed in, in the development agreement, especially the way that this, this project came to be. And the fact that this, this particular contractor is not, not following village ordinances. The last thing is fifteen point one, I think is completely, and I'll give anybody that wants my copy, my highlighted copy. But fifteen point one, it says that they must comply with the law. At their own expense, comply with all federal, state, county, municipal, and other governmental statutes, ordinances, laws, standards, provisions, rules, regulations, now or hereafter enacted. So, I challenge my colleagues to make sure that they're complying with the dark skies ordinance. I noticed in the admin, that's what brought me, in the administrative report, and that's what brought me to this, to this time, is it's gonna be heard, but also the parking. And I applaud you, Mayor, for kind of, you got thrown in this. But it looks like you're making some demands of them. And so, I appreciate that. And I think the villagers really appreciate that. Because, you know, those people on Willow Road had been asking for a cinder block wall from the very beginning, and nothing was happening. You've been in this role for two weeks, and guess what? You're, you're asking them to do it. So, thank you. So, that, that's all I say. Again, I can't vote, but I'm not gonna shut up. And I, I challenge each of the voting members to, to, to look at, look at the agreement, look at the laws, and look at the requirements. On another note, is, I don't know who saw the Albuquerque Journal, but there is a legislation that is being filed in the roundhouse that would preempt municipal and county restrictions on zoning, parking restrictions, and legal appeals with the aim of paving the way for more multifamily housing developments. And what I found very interesting with this is, one, you know, the state's kind of trying to take away the, the powers of, of local municipalities, which I, I understand. But I think municipalities know their own culture better than the state necessarily knows its own culture or knows everybody's, every municipality's own uniqueness. But what scares me is they keep talking that this is really intended for Albuquerque. We want denser infill and development in Albuquerque, more units per square foot. We understand the need for rural communities to maintain their character in the view shed. Well, we're, we're surrounded by Albuquerque. And so, we need to keep our head on a swivel, really pay attention to this bill, and make sure that we look at our zoning, because they do talk about historical districts, being able to eminent domain property. But, you know, maybe some of our open space, we have to put into some type of historical district to be able to prevent the state's outreach if this type of bill gets passed. So, in order to protect us, we need to be ahead of, of what the state's planning on doing, especially because we're in the center of this. And we need to remember why we were created. And the village was created to begin with, so that's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Kiefer. Trustee Benavides?
Yeah, I mean, if there's no certificate of occupancy, then they shouldn't be occupying. The apartments is, is pretty straightforward, I totally agree. And in regards to the block wall, I, I recall over, over a year and a half ago, two years ago, when Robert Chavez had a public meeting, this big, organized public meeting with Palidrome at El Vado. And they, they totally agreed to do that. So... So it probably has more to do with the fact that the site development plans for those last three lots have not come through. I don't think they can do anything until that happens. But yeah, I think they're on board with that. Okay. So about about the streamlined agenda, I think I think this is a good thing. I think the public will respond well to it. It's, you know, I don't know anybody that likes staying here till till 11:00 or midnight anyway. But I would like to hear from the public because, you know, if how you feel about it. But I want to add that that given that we're not going through the reports in excruciating detail, and that's that saves a lot of time, but it's gonna become incumbent upon us trustees to to look at those reports and perhaps say highlight something so the public knows that this is coming, right? So, you know, in the past, we've been accused of lack of transparency. So this is this is we make up for it by being transparent with the things that we think the public needs to know and not make it look like we're hiding anything, right? Let's see. Thank you for allowing me to continue on the board for the Albuquerque Bernaleo County Water Authority. And I think elevating that role is important to the village, and I would like to be involved with all things having to do with water that you can possibly have me participate in. And I don't mind just focusing on that because that's that could be a lot, right? And, you know, so last time, last January, we this past January, we approved a purchase agreement that's confidential as to what we we did. I don't know if that satisfies all let's say, let's say that that goes through smoothly. I don't know if that satisfies all of our water right needs, but if not, it would be good for me to know that, okay? Because I have some thoughts. Okay. Let's see. So I've mentioned this before, and I want I want you to hear from me, mayor. So we have the Del Norte open space, a big, big open space. The egress to that open space is not very good because of its proximity to the overpass of Paseo Del Norte, over Paseo Del Norte, right? And to the extent where it's dangerous, I think. And so we ought to seriously consider trying to acquire more open space to the north of that so that we can have a safer egress. And that may open up the possibilities of what we can do with that space five years now from now, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, who knows? So I I know we still have some open space bond money left. That would be a good use of that money, I think. And finally, I would say, you know, that we're all very much concerned about the intersection of Fourth and Osuna and the additional traffic. But this is this is an area where you can be especially helpful there because we don't own the intersection at Second and Osuna. And I think that is part of the solution to the traffic problem at Fourth and Osuna. And so your connections could be very helpful in what we do with that, whether it's lanes or with this timing of the lights or turn arrows, little things like that can add up for us. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Radovich?
Thank you, mayor. Now that you mentioned that trustee Benavides, I remember when we were doing the Fourth Street project, when I did that before I became a trustee, there was a study that the mayor, Mayor Abraham, had us do, and that may have been before your time, Maria, to look at the intersection as a roundabout. I'm not suggesting that a roundabout would be a great thing there. It could be, but I don't have that expertise. But he did have us look at that as the designers of that project, and I believe the engineers did provide him with some information about it. So it might be worth looking at because I agree, I think it's an intersection that we really need to fix, and there's just so precious little room in that intersection to fix it in the throat of of Osuna.
So you mean the egress, right? The egress or the actual the intersection? No. I'm sorry. Are you talking about when you say the intersection, you're talking about the egress to Fourth Street or are you talking?
Egress or egress. I'm talking about both. That intersection is so tight that I think looking at it, again, is is it would be a really important thing, and if we can gain control of it. I didn't realize the village didn't own that because I know the village has commissioned at least two or three studies of that intersection itself. So I'm surprised to hear that.
Oh, I'm with you. I'm sorry. You're talking about the intersection of Second Osuna now?
No, I'm talking about Fourth and Osuna.
Oh.
No, trustee Radovich.
Did I get confused? I'm sorry.
We own the intersection of Fourth.
Fourth and Osuna. You're talking about Second.
Yes.
Sorry.
And then I went off to talk about the egress.
I apologize.
And I thought maybe you were focused on that.
Sorry, I got confused at that.
I got confused.
Fourth and Osuna, though, I think we should look at more closely. So that I'm just playing off that. Another thing I wanted to say is I agree with both trustees that the new format is really great. I really appreciate you doing that, and thank you, John, for your brief kind of comments on department reports. I think it's gonna be more efficient, it's gonna be it's it is more logical, and it will be less time consuming. So I thank you for that. The other thing I wanted to mention is I really enjoy and think it's productive to have conversations among us as opposed to kind of picking people, picking trustees to speak. So I appreciate that that happened tonight as well because I think it really does need to be a conversation with the community and among us because we're representatives of the community. So thanks for both of those things on on the agenda.
Thank you. Trustee Radovich?
Okay, well, so just a just a couple of items. You know, certainly, the 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 bills before the state that trustee Kiefer was referring to are really problematic, are really problematic. And she points out very, very well that we're in the middle of the metroplex here, you know, and that we need to be able to ensure that we are the ones that take responsibility for those decisions and that the and that it doesn't happen without our ability to be at the table. I do know that that the municipal league is certainly gonna do some level of intervention, but we need to have a kind of a clear idea about what we are going to propose to the state so that, again, we're able to withstand whatever kind of changes might be proposed in the legislature. You know, I guess the second item is having to deal with APS, continuing to try to deal with them. And Mayor Real has been extremely helpful and certainly the, you know, participation of Fred, you've been you've been really very good as well, that we need to keep pressure on on them. There are still a number of questions that have to be answered about, again, traffic, still a number of questions that have to be answered about about their curriculum and the ability of other students in the area to be able to attend Taft, who may not who might not have gone through the Carano Program. And that's gonna be an issue. I've been hearing from from parents whose children right now are in Alvarado, and still very concerned about what's going to happen once the transition is done this fall. And again, you know, with Fred and John and with with mayor, we've been pushing APS for answers, but it's been difficult to get it done. And hopefully, they're going to be more more involved in this. There's supposed there's there's a planned town meeting that is gonna be scheduled. I don't know if we have a date on that yet, John Dewey at this point.
I do not know, not as of yet.
Okay. Yeah, there's a town hall, and I know that Representative Huckman-Vehil is gonna be involved in that. But we, again, need to continue pushing on APS to make sure that the concerns that we have are being addressed. That's what I was about to say.
You made me think of something else, trustee. Why can't we use our representatives and senators to attack the issue that trustee Kiefer brought up and that you just kind of seconded? They are the ones that are our front lines with the legislature, so.
So trustee Radovich, I was gonna sum up some of these points, but I appreciate you sort of preempting that a minute. If you'll recall, I think all of you have gotten notice that the 27th, 28th is Municipal League Day in Santa Fe. I do think that this particular issue as it relates to preempting local government's authority on land use is an important one to raise with our not only with our delegation, but with all the legislators as we do make our way through the legislative body during these days. I know that we've contacted the municipal league and and they've assured us that there is usually some issues that unify communities across the state, and this is one of them, right? And that's simply every community nervous about exactly what the state would do and what we would have to live with, so to speak. And obviously, our state government is is critical, especially when it comes to funding housing. And we all know that that's an important issue for the whole state, and we know our governor is very supportive of that. But recognizing that we also have to protect what what or at least do our fiduciary work and our obligatory work as elected officials from our communities to ensure that we do the right thing for our cities. And as I think trustee Kiefer said, you know, we we are the ones that have been given that, if you will, privilege from the voters, and that we should we take that seriously and we should be able to protect that. So we'll have that day, and we'll and we certainly have obviously made I have made my concerns on this issue known to to several of our representatives, et cetera. So I do think all of us collectively, whoever is there, should should obviously make sure that we give those points. Another point, I appreciate you all's interest or at least support as it relates to the streamlining of the agenda. And we'll make some little fine tweaks here, et cetera. Trustee Benavides, I appreciate making sure that we don't want to have our community feel like we're not talking about some important items that might be in our, if you will, in our department head reports. And so John and I will work again and make sure we. The challenge with those issues always is what's important to Joe but not be important to so to Mary or what have you, and and so having to make those those calls. But I do think one of the things important as we get as Danielle gets these these agendas out early enough, that you all read them and and, you know, and highlight it for us, let us know, hey, we really want to know a little more about, for example, the school on Second and Second and El Pueblo, so that we have those conversations because we obviously want to make sure that the community knows that we're all staying on top of those issues. Quickly on water rights, I think trustee Benavides, you're spot on. We need to continue to look at those, and I shared with you some conversations today with the DOT and others, and so we'll continue to pursue that. You can never have too many of those, as we all know, especially in a growing community when we need to 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 ensure that our open spaces stay green and that we have the ability to do that. Second and Osuna, we'll look at that as well and make sure that we talk to the city and to the county to see how that how that configuration, how the timing of those lights work as it relates to the impacts on Fourth. And, you know, trustee Kiefer, your your perspective as it relates to to the Peladrome project is 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 also very important. We need to make sure that they are following our rules and our processes and that we look at that contract to ensure that we're that we're holding them accountable to the work that they're doing. And I think we're getting to a point where I think we can get this to the next level and really provide the community a direction on this project, as you know, and we'll work through that. And and I do think that the issue associated with the Del Norte open space access is really important. And and I've been John and I have been having this conversation here for the last couple of days. We went out and saw the facility. To me, it would be it is a challenge, given the entrance to what used to be the Miller Farm area off of Fourth Street. We need to look at that and ensure that we're that we're actually recognizing that we're gonna have public access points somewhere and that it comports with what we need to make sure that it's a safe access and that we and that we do that correctly. So those are some of the issues that we're working on, and there's probably lots of others. But I do appreciate all of you, and I appreciate the members of the audience coming to to listen to the discussion. You know, I'm a novice mayor here, my friends, so, you know, made a couple of little boo-boos here with the mic, but I think we got through it. Oh, okay. So without any other items on the agenda, I will make a request a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
It's been moved.
I'll second it.
And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Thank you all for being here.
Yeah. Mayor, just just in the same direction, not a part of the meeting, on the the bills that are before the legislature, following up on that, I'm not follow everything, but I've checked, there are four or five that you need to pay a particular attention to. One is for charging stations. You're prohibited from barring charging stations in any zone, and they must be approved administratively. There are prohibitions against prohibiting electrified fences that will provide alarms. There are one was one bill that says you must allow duplexes and townhouses and and do away with all site restrictions and allow commercial development in any residential zone except the historic zone. And there's another one that prohibits from requiring offset parking for any off-site parking for any commercial or residential development. As far as the certificate of occupancy, the village has sent a letter to the county requesting that they revoke the certificate of occupancy because it's not in accordance with the court orders or the approvals that they agreed to in the settlement agreement. I don't know if that's been responded to, so that is is something that's already happened.
Thank you. Mr. Chappell, do you mind putting together an email with the bill numbers on these?
I'd be happy to do that. And I haven't looked at all of the there are just 500 million allocated for affordable housing, and so I know there's got to be some zoning and other things mixed up in that. Those were just standalone, particularly one that says no height restrictions, duplexes and townhouses in any residential zone, minor development. Those are exactly what the village is not looking for.
Thank you.
You know, I'm sorry. Do you mean formal?
Yes, just call.
Oh, I'm sorry. For adjournment?
Yes.
Okay. For adjournment at it says at 3:00. Three minutes at 8:09. Pardon me.
So the village doesn't issue the certificate of occupancy?
Most of it.
The way this is.
We're not. We're not.